It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr Tuesday, November 12th. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If you all will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands united, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen.
Public comments? Do we have any? Anyone sign off a comment? We have a copy of the minutes.
The move that we approve the minutes is presented, your honor?
Second to approve discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next time, Ms. Claims.
Mr. Petes, consider reviewing and there is a document.
Hold the pass.
Second to approve discussion. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Mr. Petes, this said he takes saying he's going to be a little late, so we might have to skip over his report until he gets in. Is there anyone that needs to come before the court at this time, before we start with our reports? Okay. Item eight. If you could go on to item number eight, this is to approve proclamation proclaiming November 11th of 15th as National Psychology Awareness Week.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Vera Rios. I am a school psychologist with the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District, and I have invited several individuals from the community that I'd like for them to come forward. We have some LSSPs from Roma ISD and Zapata County. Can you introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Versave Salazar. I'm currently an LSP with Zapata County, and I service three other neighboring districts from a total of four counties within the South Texas area.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. My name is Gabriela Rosa, and I am in the district LSP for Roma ISD.
Hi, good morning. My name is Erin Garcia. I'm one of the LSSPs for Rio Grande City CISD.
Also with us are the directors for the Special Education Department at Rio Grande City CISD. Ms. Garcia is our director. And Dr. Pablo is our assistant director. And Ms. Gracie Narango is also an assistant director.
Good morning.
The reason we're here today is because about a month ago, I learned that it would be National School Psychology Psychologist Week, and it was titled Finder Focus, and it would be held this week. And so I started the process of requesting a proclamation through the judge's office. But a little after that, I became really busy providing the psychological services that we provide at the school, so I started putting it off, and I thought that I would cancel it and that we would not come, because being the way we are is that our profession is more of helping others versus helping ourselves. And so I thought about canceling and that we would just let it go, because we did not need the recognition. But within these past couple of weeks, it became more pressing that I felt that we needed to do it. And the reason was that as psychologists with the school district, we work with children with autism, we work with children with learning disabilities, and we work with children with emotional disturbances. And so we all know, within these past couple of weeks, we've had a lot of rhetoric going back and forth about the Chase Olivares case. In our department, it shook us to the core. And so because of that, it became an issue that I felt that we needed to press forward as advocates for those children, that children from Roma ISD and children from Rio ISD could possibly gather and take a life. It is our responsibility to advocate for our youth and families in need, so I invited the neighboring LSSPs to be here, as a reminder of that we are sister communities. We must press forward, helping these children sort out their problems with emotions, and help them diffuse their thoughts of suicide, homicide, and substance abuse. We must help develop healthy educational opportunities, and we must seek those to help with emotional instability. I honor these lives, and we must honor those that are lost. I ask that the court proclaim this week National School Psychology Week. Thank you.
Are those the moves, your honor? Second to you. Moved and second to approve discussion. You know, under discussion, I do want to thank all of you, ladies and gentlemen, that are affiliated or that work with our children, and not only our children, our community. You know, I guess it's never brought to the forefront with some of these issues that we have in our community. In our culture, especially in our culture, it's always kind of a taboo to go see a psychologist or psychiatrist, but it's mental health, and I'm preaching to the choir, but it's just like any other youngness. I, for one, was not really aware of what you all do, until Jessica got into this profession. But I'm truly amazed at the work that you all do, and that it does work. You know, a lot of times people say, "No, you don't want to spend time." It's not. You know, I've seen it work. So, you know, on behalf of the community, we thank you all for the work that you all do. I know it's a thankless job that you all do, and very stressful, but I'm glad that you all do do it. And again, on behalf of the citizens of this county, we thank you. Sincerely thank you for what you all do.
Thank you.
I do have a motion and a second. Honorable, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. By the way, those that don't know, she's my daughter.
Can we take a picture right now?
Yeah.
Everybody, 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 yes, since I walk around here.
Arriba te Pedro Fabulon. Pedro Fabulon Martinez.
And there's going to be a lot of pictures, so you all pretty much need to stay in place.
Thank you.
As a leader, ladies and gentlemen, you are working with our future. You are working with our future, general leadership.
Recuerdos.
No sé qué, ¿verdad?
Todavía, ¿eh? A que le queme.
Que se perece.
Desde hace muchos años de eso.
To Bajolote.
La comida, la comida.
Mojó el dedo.
Palmo de frijolero.
Okay, let's go back.
Is there anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? Okay, if not, we'll start with our reports. Gas Department?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report is in your package. I just want to clarify the last part of the report, Judge, that refers to the Railroad Commission did not approve our response about the steel risers that are still an issue with them. I had proposed, there's 206 risers that are steel, out of 1,500 accounts that we have. Throughout the years, we've been converting them to annodless, and these 206 have been staying behind, and I had proposed, they mentioned it to us on the last audit, and I had proposed for us to be removing them throughout the year as we go along. And that's what I had submitted, hoping that I would save some money, because I have to buy some annodes. And then throughout the year, I have to buy some annodless risers. So I was trying to get, I was trying to eliminate the cost of the annodes. Annodes are the, it's a bag of electricity that's put in the ground, connected to the riser, so it won't corrode. I was trying to eliminate that cost, but they did not accept that, and we're supposed to monitor, we're supposed to monitor 20% every quarter. We will meet that. Our first monitor date is November 25th, and we will meet that without a problem. The only thing is that there's going to be a little extra cost in purchasing those annodes that I was trying to eliminate. But other than that, we're doing good. We're going to be in compliance, I have no doubt about it. No más cuesta un poquito más de dinero. Any questions?
No question.
Thank you.
Transfer Station?
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. The report is before you. If you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Any question? Move it.
Thank you all.
Tax Assessor?
So then, the high-level portion of the report, so I didn't want to bring you two to find here, I guess.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. My report for this month of October 2019, the total countywide collections for this month were $4,210,438.31. In October of 2018, there were $4,885,334.64. There was a total collections of $121,907.60, more than last year. Our total current collections for Starr County entities were $2,630,013.10. Current collections in October of 2018 were $2,311,934.74. There was a total current collections of $318,078, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for October 2019, just for Starr County, were $248,968.93. Total delinquent collections for October 2018 were $224,964.40. That was a total delinquent collections of $24,449.49, more than last year. As of October 31st, the tax office has collected 19% of the projected current collections. Projected collections remaining are $11,476,820.90. Also, the tax office has collected the 10% projected delinquent collections, projected delinquent collections remaining are $2,336,837.21. That was the portion that I gave you last. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report's in front of you, just kind of, I'm not going to go through everything, but just kind of told you that the total for the month of October was $32,364.90, due to the Treasuries Office. We have seen an increase a little bit steadily, as with recordings coming through. I just want to let the Commissioners' Court know and the Judge do apologize, we are doing some minor painting into the office. Sorry for not letting you guys know, I just kind of just did it on my own, but that's pretty much what we're doing, just some painting, a different color, I wanted to do a little cowboy blue in there, so we did that. And the other thing I will bring in to you all next month is that we did try to see how we could improve the office and improve the collections in the county, and we have noticed that there are some collections that we're not getting the full benefit, I guess, the full allowable in collections, so we will probably be bringing that next month, respectively asking to increase some of the fees. And it's usually, it's not too many different things, it's things that are very uncommon, you know, when it comes to cemetery plots and stuff like that, that we're not getting the full amount in collections for the county, so we'll probably be bringing that up next month for approval, Commissioners' Court. Any questions? Thank you. Church Department?
Good morning, Your Honor. Commissioners. The projected revenues for the month of October 2019, projected revenues collected, we collected from the City of Uruguayan, $720,000. Roma, $240,000. USA Solutions, $1,500. The medical transport for the, I'm sorry, the Marshal Transport Services, $9,093. The Marshal Medical Services, $863. The US Marshal Services for inmates, $140,085. Hidal County SO, $137,400, for a total projected revenues for October, $289,901. Our monthly average for the month of October were, we had an average of 79 federal inmates, 66 Hidalgo inmates, 83 Starr County inmates, for a total of 228 average. And the, I believe it was last week, we changed, we did some changes to our beds and how we were housing, so we picked up the Hidalgo inmates of 74, and the Federals to 82. The difference between this year, October 2019 to October 2018, is a difference of $45,807, more than last year. That's my report for October.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is a report for October 2019. The total revenue is $203,383.50, with 50 cents, and we show a decrease of $9,628 for the month of October 2019 compared to the month of October 2018. And we show an increase of $6,762 on collections in the month of October 2019 compared to the month of September 2019. We have other collections of $169.19, and the grand total collections for October is $203,552.69. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of October in front of you. The ending balance for the General Fund is at $1,268,620.11. In 2018, it was at $434,531.72, for a difference of $834,88.29, more so than last year. The Road and Bridge, the ending balance is at $414,631.19. Last year, it was at $333,607.55, for a positive difference of $81,023.64. The Enterprise Funds, the ending balance for this fund is at $467,051.70. In 2018, it was at $354,640.67, for a difference of $112,411.33, more so than last year. The Drainage District, the ending balance is at $988,812.92. In 2018, it was at $701,206.12, for a difference of $287,606.80, more so than last year. And the grand total for all funds is at $31,139,115.82. At this time, last year, it was at $1,823,986.62, for a positive difference of $1,315,129.76. That concludes my report. Other than questions, please?
Just a point of clarification on the gas system, and you notice it's in red. It really is not, it should be in the black, however, when we divided, at one point, we had the waste, the transfer station, the landfill at that time, and the gas under one. When they split up, it was in the red, all that did went to the gas department, which should not have, should have gone to the gas. And the gas has been paying off on that. If we did not pay for that, or if we wouldn't take that into account, that would be in the black. Right?
Right. So we should be in the black, hopefully, in the black, hopefully, in next month's report.
Okay, but we do need to, but it's just a line item, I guess, accounting procedure, whatever it's called. But, you know, it's really technically not in the red. Any other question, Congressman?
Thank you.
Honorable, please. Morning, Commissioners. Judge.
So we've got today's monthly report for the month of October. October is the first month of the fiscal year. We'll start on page one of the report that you should have in front of you. We've got the reconciled balances of the General Fund at $947,294.14, the Road and Bridge Fund at $298,038.14, and the Payroll Clearing Fund at $375,260.18. Part two reflects the expenditure report for the General Fund as of October 31st, 2019. As a percent of the year elapsed, again, it's one month in the fiscal year, which equates to about 8.5%. In summary, the General Fund amount expended year-to-date is $1,551,884.00, or 8.2%, just slightly below the 8.5 for the one month. Breakdown of several departments are reflected at the bottom of page one and continue through page two. The departments exceeding the 8.5% are reflected in bold. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund, again, as of October 31st. In summary, the Road and Bridge Fund amount expended year-to-date is $504,069.00, or 8.13%, which falls just below the 8.5% for the year elapsed. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three and continue through page four, we have year-to-date summary of revenue reports for the General Fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are $853,089.00 and $280,000, both at 4.51%. Page five reflects the summary of revenues and expenses for the Enterprise Funds as of October 31st, 2019. International Bridge reflects $203,553.00, with expenditures of $350,848.00, or a deficit of $147,295.00. Gas Operating System reflects year-to-date revenues of $73,009.00, with expenditures of $59,488.00, in excess of $13,521.00. The Solid Waste Transfer Station reflects year-to-date revenues of $24,431.00, with expenses of $26,921.00, or deficit of $2,490.00. And lastly, page six reflects the summary of debt owed. As of October 31st, 2019, the total current balance is $1,873,512.00. Any questions on any of those items?
Quick question on the page six, participation with Roma, that's the current balance at the end of the fiscal year?
Should be as of October 31st.
October 31st, so it's $572.
Right.
So I thought that that was close to $2 million at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, we've knocked it down.
So we've been quite good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Under my report, just a reminder about the auction that we're going to be having, what is it?
One, the second? It'll be next Friday, not this Friday, but next, the 22nd. So remember to have that inventory list for me on time, and also, if any of you are going to be sending, any department is going to be sending in computers, our ITs need to clean them out, so we need them now. If you bring them at the last minute, we won't be able to sell them, because, you know, they need time to clear them out.
How long would it take them to clear out those computers?
Well, they're right there.
It depends how many.
How long would it take to clear up one of the computers? Actually, the servers are the ones that had to be pulled out, right?
Yeah. I mean, we pull out all the hard drives at once.
Okay. I got some, but we were questioning that, because we saw on TV that, you know, those computers that were so, had a bunch of rights. So I'll check with the Secretary, so we can call you.
Yeah, we never leave the hard drive. Yeah, if we can, you know, especially computers, if you can bring those in, like, tomorrow or today, so that they can have time to clean out. Make sure we don't.
Did you notify the fire department?
I sent memos to everyone.
Because my fire department has a bunch of stuff they got to sell, and it doesn't work, you know.
Yeah. Whatever you all don't need, don't want, whatever, this is a time to get rid of it. Under county government, we cannot give it, we cannot sell it, we cannot, anything, it has to be auctioned off. Everyone needs to have an opportunity to buy whatever we have.
And it'll be at the Annex Parking Lot at 10:00, November 22nd. It's
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners. My report for this month of October 2019. The total countywide collections for this month were four million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars with thirty-one cents. In October of 2018, there were four million, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. There was a total collections of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars with sixty cents, more than last year. Our total current collections for Starr County entities were two million, six hundred and thirty thousand, thirteen dollars and ten cents. Current collections in October of 2018 were two million, three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. There was a total current collections of three hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-eight dollars, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for October 2019, just for Starr County, were two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Total delinquent collections for October 2018 were two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents, I'm sorry. Those are total delinquent collections of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, more than last year. As of October 31st, the Tax Office has collected nineteen percent of the projected current collections. Projected collections remaining are eleven million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. Also, the Tax Office has collected the ten percent of projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are two million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars with seven cents. That was the portion that I gave you last. Any questions? Thank you.
Morning Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
My report's in front of you, just kind of, not going to go through everything, but just kind of told you that the total for the month of October was thirty-two thousand, three sixty-four ninety. Due to the Treasurer's Office, we have seen an increase a little bit steadily as with recordings coming through. I just want to let the Commissioners' Court know and Judge do apologize, we are doing some minor painting into the office. Sorry for not letting you guys know, I just kind of just did it on my own, but that's pretty much what we're doing, just some painting, a different color, I wanted to do a little cowboy blue in there, so we did that. And the other thing I will be bringing to you all next month is that we did try to see how we could improve the office and improve the collections in the county, and we have noticed that there are some collections that we're not getting the full benefit, I guess, the full allowable in collections. So we will probably be bringing that next month, respectively asking to increase some of the fees. And it's usually, it's not too many different things, it's things that are very uncommon, you know, when it comes to cemetery plots and stuff like that, that we're not getting the full amount in collections for the county. So we'll probably be bringing that up next month for approval Commissioners' Court. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning Your Honor. Commissioners. The projected revenues for the month of October 2019. Projected revenues collected, we collected from the City of Rurales, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Roma, two hundred and forty dollars. USA Solutions, fifty hundred. The medical transport, for the, I'm sorry, the Marshal Transport Services, nine thousand ninety-three. The Marshal Medical Services, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. The US Marshal Services for inmates, one hundred and forty thousand, eighty-five dollars. Hidal County SO, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred, for a total projected revenues for October, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. Our monthly average for the month of October were, we had an average of seventy-nine federal inmates, sixty-six Hidalgo inmates, eighty-three Starr County inmates, for a total of two twenty-eight average. And the, I believe it was last week, or we changed, we did some changes to our beds and how we were housing. So we picked up the Hidalgo inmates of seventy-four and the Federals to eighty-two. The, what's we had here? The difference between this year, October 2019 to October 2018 is a difference of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars more than last year. That's my report for October. Thank You, Your Honor.
Good morning Judge Commissioners. This is a report for October 2019. The total revenue is two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three with fifty cents, and we show a decrease of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the month of October 2019 compared to the month of October 2018. And we show an increase of six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars on collections in the month of October 2019 compared to the month of September 2019. We have other collections of one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. And the grand total collections for October is two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars with sixty-nine cents. Do you have any questions?
Good morning Judge and Commissioners, you have my report for the month of October in front of you. The ending balance for the General Fund is at one million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six twenty with one cent. In 2018, it was at four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five thirty-one with seventy-two cents, for a difference of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, eighty-eight with twenty-nine cents, more so than last year. The Road and Bridge, the ending balance is at four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one with nineteen cents. Last year, it was at three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six oh seven with fifty-five cents, for a positive difference of eighty-one thousand, twenty-three with sixty-four cents. The Enterprise Funds, the ending balance for this fund is at four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, fifty-one with seventy cents. In 2018, it was at three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty with sixty-seven cents, for a difference of a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eleven with three cents, more so than last year. The Drainage District, the ending balance is at nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve with ninety-two cents. In 2018, it was at seven hundred, seven hundred, seven hundred and one thousand, two hundred and six with twelve cents, for a difference of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six oh six with eighty cents, more so than last year. And the grand total for all funds is at three million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen with eighty-two cents. At this time, last year, it was at one million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine eighty-six with six cents, for a positive difference of one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, one twenty-nine with seventy-six cents. That concludes my report. Any questions please?
Just a point of clarification on the gas system, you notice it's in red. It really is not, it should be in the black, however, when we divided, at one point, we had the way, the transfer station, the landfill at that time, and the gas under one. When they split up, it was in the red, all the debt went to the gas department, which should not happen, should have gone. For some reason, it always did, and the gas has been paying off on that. If we did not pay for that, or if we wouldn't take that into account, that would be in the black.
Right, so we should be in the black hopefully, in the black hopefully next month's report.
Okay, but we do need to, it's just a line item, I guess, accounting procedure or whatever it's called. But, you know, it's really technically not in the red.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Judge. So what we've got today is a monthly report for the month of October, October is the first month of the fiscal year. We'll start on page one of the report that you should have in front of you. We've got the reconciled balances of the General Fund at nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-fourteen. The Road and Bridge Fund at two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. And the Payroll Clearing Fund at three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighteen cents. Part two reflects the expenditure report for the General Fund as of October 31st, 2019. As a percent of the year elapsed, again, it's one month in the fiscal year, which equates to about eight point five percent. And summary, the General Fund amount expended year-to-date is one million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, or eight point two percent, just slightly below the eight point five for the one month. Breakdown of several departments are reflected at the bottom of page one and continued through page two. The departments exceeding the eight point five percent are reflected in bold. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund, again, as of October 31st. In summary, the Road and Bridge Fund amount expended year-to-date is five hundred and four thousand, sixty-nine dollars, or eight point one-three percent, which falls just below the eight point five percent for the year elapsed. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three and continued through page four, we have year-to-date summary of revenue reports for the General Fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eighty-nine dollars and two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, both at four point five-one percent. Page five reflects the summary of revenues and expenses for the Enterprise Funds as of October 31st, 2019. International Bridge reflects two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, with expenditures of three hundred and fifty thousand, eight forty-eight, or a deficit of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Gas Operating System reflects year-to-date revenues of seventy-three thousand, nine dollars, with expenditures of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, an excess of thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. The Solid Waste Transfer Station reflects year-to-date revenues of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, with expenses of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, or deficit of two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. And lastly, page six reflects the summary of debt owed. As of October 31st, 2019, the total current balance is one million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. Any questions on?
Quick question on the page six, participation with Roma, that's the current balance at the end of the fiscal year?
Should be as of October 31st.
Five hundred and seventy-two?
Right.
I think that was close to two million at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, we've knocked it down. Thank you.
Under my report, just a reminder about the auction that we're going to be having, what is it?
Twenty-second.
It'll be next Friday, not this Friday, but next, the twenty-second. So remember to have that inventory list for me on time. And also, if any of you are going to be sending, any department is going to be sending in computers, our ITs need to clean them out, so we need them now. If you bring them at the last minute, we won't be able to sell them because, you know, they need time to clear them out.
How long would it take them to clear out those computers?
They're right there.
Depends how many.
What are the computers, actually, the servers are the ones that had to be pulled out, right?
Yeah, I mean, we pull out all the hard drives at one point.
I got some that, but we were questioning that because we saw on TV that, you know, those computers that were so, had a bunch of rights. So I'll check with the secretaries, see if they call you.
Yeah, we never leave the hard drive.
Yeah, if we can, you know, especially computers, if you can bring those in like tomorrow or today, so that they can have time to clean out.
Did you notify the fire department?
I sent memos to everyone.
Because my fire department has a bunch of stuff they got to sell, but it doesn't work, you know.
Whatever y'all don't need, don't want, whatever, this is the time to get rid of it. Under county government, we cannot give it, we cannot sell it, we cannot, anything, it has to be auctioned off. Everyone needs to have an opportunity to buy whatever we have.
And it'll be at the annex parking lot, at ten o'clock, November twenty-second. Like I said, make sure that inventory is, comes to the office so that, you know, you can be, either your stuff can be sold and appropriated to your department.
Thank you.
We have a vehicle or something that doesn't run.
We sell it.
Can you?
We sell it.
I know, but I'm talking about, we got a fire truck that was rolled over, that's okay.
We've done pictures in the past.
Take a picture and put it there, see where it's going to be.
If you can, let's see if we can blow up the picture.
It just rolled over.
Just a reminder, and that's to all departments.
Yes, sir.
Next item, item number seven is to approve a vendor's list, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, I believe you have that reported.
Second motion.
Motion second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight, we've done that. Nine is to approve resolution to support participating with the talk with subjects for government council and confirming the appointments of our representatives. I believe our representatives are?
Commissioner Pena and Commissioner Science are the ones right now.
They want to serve again? Are those only checking the motion?
Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve resolution to support and to confirm Commissioner Science and Commissioner Pena as our representatives. Discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is to approve a MOU between the Red Cross and the county. I don't see anyone from the Red Cross, but we did have a meeting with them and it's pretty much of what we've always had. But this is in preparation for any disaster that we may have, where the Red Cross needs to come in. We must have some type of interlocal memorandum of understanding. But the only real big difference is on security, that we are saying that we will be responsible to, for our Sheriff's Department and our PDs as far as security. The only clause that I did ask that it be changed a little bit is whenever we have the capacity, because I don't want for our law enforcement to be spread so thin and then that we cannot handle our security. And they agreed to that, so that was something.
I move that we approve the memorandum, Your Honor.
Taken.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, next item, and this is on the per diem rate for the county. It has been brought to my attention, and I'm sure to you all also, that our per diems have not changed in, I don't know how long, maybe ten years. And currently, what we pay, especially for meals and things like that, are totally, totally outdated. I think with what we pay, breakfast alone takes everything, and our employees don't have anything, also for lodging. So, you know, I'm asking the court to consider and hopefully approve that we increase our lodging to ninety-six dollars, that's what the state of Texas has, and our per diem meals to fifty-five dollars for all three meals. I think it's a fair, and also, on the travel, on the travel, we're right there. I think it's fifty-five cents is what we pay, and the state has fifty-seven or something like that. So it's up to you all, if you all want to increase it to, no, it's fifty-eight, I think, what the state pays.
On the lodging, an inch of fifty-five?
Lodging at ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Per diem.
I think it's a little too low because, I mean, you know, out there, you won't pay a hot dog for ten, twelve dollars, even a hot dog out there.
It's, you know, again, I believe the same, Commissioner, that they're terribly under.
Nowadays, you won't take any meal out there, especially if you got out here at least twenty dollars, even for breakfast.
Well, again.
I would say go at least to sixty-five.
On the meals?
On the meals.
You're not going to get any argument from me. Now, one thing though, the budgets don't get, don't increase, so whatever is there, you need.
You gotta be paying on your own budget, I agree, you know. I don't, you know, I don't travel very much, you know, only when I have to, so, but, you know.
So.
That's my recommendation, I'll just move.
And your motion would be ninety-six dollars lodging and sixty-five for meals?
And the mileage, I think you said you're right.
It's fifty-eight, we pay fifty-five.
I would recommend a hundred dollars for lodging, four dollars more, that's all. Four dollars more, lodging a hundred, and we'll go sixty-five per diem. So it's one sixty-five total day. Lodging and meals.
Well, I had a motion.
Was that amended?
You're amended?
Yeah. My second, yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Honitor, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Again, just right on the nail.
Yes, I have a question on the per diem of sixty-five, how does that break down?
Yeah, we need to break that down, that could be like three. Well, I think the breakfast should be less, dinner should be the most, sixty-five, how can we break that?
Now we got to tell people what to eat when?
Well, do you have to, divide by?
Right now, it's eight, ten, and eighteen.
What did we go, fifteen, twenty, and thirty? Fifteen breakfast, twenty lunch, thirty per diem?
Fifteen, twenty, and thirty?
Yeah, that sounds good. Yes, sir.
No, that's fine. Yeah.
Can you include that in your motion?
Right.
Okay, that's also included and seconded in the motion, Honitor, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, item twelve is an action item, and this is to approve contract between Starr County and Francisco and Elizabeth Chapa Commission.
Yeah, are those a motion?
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is an action item, and this is to authorize planning department to execute the widdy-lot program in the following individuals. I think, okay, Mr. Garcia.
Good morning Judge Commissioners. At this time, I would like to request the approval for the widdy-lot abatement program on this certain lots owned by these individuals. I'd like to stress that as of the four individuals that are on the list right now, this was filed under the Commissioner Garza's precinct. Out of the four individuals that are on the list, two of them have already complied.
This thing is working, I mean, on this four that we had, two of them already complied. And one is almost done, and we got, one of them said she gave up. You clean it and send us the bill, and we're going to pay on, want to do a contract basis, on a monthly basis, because they're willing to do it. And we're going to continue doing that, we got, we got a lot of them. And once they get the letter and I tell them, look, it's up to you guys, because you're going to have a linger property. And eventually, if you don't pay, they'll be sold. So it's coming through, and we got a lot of them, so we're working on that, you know, but it's still working. And that lady has already agreed that we go into that property and.
Other necessary notices have been.
Right, but then we had a lot of people that had tires, and it was, that lady, the one that left, she's got a terrible mask because it's not her, her son was the one that did all that stuff. And I said, look, man, we're going to clean it, but next time, if he comes in and continues dumping there, and you don't file charges on him, we're going to file them on you. Because we cannot continue to be cleaning up every time, so you need to be ready, man. You need to start thinking, if you want to do it, if you don't press charge on your own son, we'll press them on you. Say, no, no, that's all right, so.
We, you know, and I commend you, Commissioner, because we do need to get a handle on this thing, you know, it's, we need to clean up or make it.
They get upset and they threaten you and all this kind of stuff, but it's normal procedure, you know, nothing is going to happen, you know.
I was going to suggest that once the man hours were calculated, as far as the cost.
But we take care, we're going to use the FIMA, the FIMA rate that they have for the loaders, for the backhoes, the trucks and everything, and then whatever we take out there and to dump everything, we already explained to them that that's what it's going to cost. And those guys that cleaned up, they said, no, we'd rather do it, I said, well, it's up to you, but we're going to take action. So it is working.
Okay, I, I don't have a motion, do I?
No.
I do, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve or to authorize, discussion. Honitor, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is to accept a letter of resignation from Justice of Peace Prejudice Number Eight, Josef Perez Jr.
I move that we approve the resignation.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is action item for canvassing the Constitution Amendment in the election.
Good morning Commissioner and Judge. You also have the final results for the Amendment 2019 election? Do you have any questions?
Second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. The thing is that the income tax didn't pass. Item sixteen is to approve, oh, this are budget amendments.
Sixteen to twenty-six?
Fifteen to twenty-six?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen to twenty-six. All budget amendments within the respective departments. Second, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. It's eleven forty-five, is that correct?
No.
Ten forty-five.
Ten forty-five is pursuant to section five-five, one point oh seven-four. You will go into executive session to discuss labor and salaries, general liability, law enforcement, liability proposal, and the billing claims. It's eleven forty-five, and we're back in open session. Order of salaries.
Want to approve, Your Honor?
Taken.
To approve order salary that's presented, second, discussion. Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. Under the general viability and law enforcement viability proposal.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the one discussed in executive session.
I'll take the motion.
This is the one that I, million dollar per occurrence, and the combined contribution for law enforcement viability and general liability is ninety-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Any discussion? Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries. And then the other one was, I guess, it was really just a report?
Yes.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved in second, Honitor, please. Oppose. Motion carries.